I think it is, we don't even know what time it is, 6:04. This is the regular meeting of the Sanford City Council, Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. This meeting will be conducted by a remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSAs section 403A. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 82121204280 and password 430373, or via computer at the link provided on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at www.sanfordmain.org under email, city department, city council. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance led this evening by Deputy Mayor Hurley, and she will also have called for the moment of silence. Deputy Mayor Hurley, if everyone else could please mute their computers.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. We'll now have a moment of silence.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hurley. Roll call next, sorry. Counselor Martell?
Present.
Counselor Hanselman?
Present.
Counselor Tuttle is absent with notice on his way to Augusta. Counselor Stackpole?
Present.
Counselor Lanigan is absent with notice. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Present.
And I am Anne Ray Mistracchio, the mayor of the City of Sanford, and this evening we're joined by Steve Buck, the city manager, and Marissa Ricketts, the manager's executive. First item on the agenda are the minutes, the minutes from 21-272-01. Ordered to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
That is a motion by Counselor Hurley and a second?
Second.
A second by Counselor Martell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle is absent. Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan is absent. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is five to zero. Next item on the agenda is the 21-272-01, ordered to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hanselman and a second by Counselor Martell. Just as a matter of discussion, I just thought that we should note that I think Counselor Lanigan left, and I think that, I'm trying to remember which one wasn't noted, Marissa. I just wanted to make sure that the attendance is checked because at some point we had somebody leave, but we were still at 6:00 because I think Counselor Tuttle joined in late. So if you could just make sure that that attendance is, okay, it says Counselor Tuttle joined the meeting at eight. I think Counselor Lanigan left at around the same time that Counselor Tuttle came in.
Well done.
Okay, thank you. All right. As long as everybody's okay with that correction, we'll just call the roll and vote on the minutes. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle is absent. Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is five to zero. Mayor's report, city council subcommittee. I have a couple of things this evening. I'm going to do my mayor's report first and then we'll do the subcommittee reports. I have a letter that I received by way of, I think I was included on a list of Chief Benati, and I'm going to read, I promised that I would read it into the record. "To the City of Sanford Fire Chief Benati, Police Chief Connolly and Mayor Mistracchio, on the evening of Thursday, May 20th, 2021, my house erupted in flames and your departments responded in force. I now understand that ten different mutual aid fire departments responded to my home and have provided continued city fire coverage stations, as well multiple Stanford police officers, Stanford ACO Missalis, and city dispatchers helped coordinate the response. House fire is a homeowner's worst fear. Firefighters of all these departments were there in my hour of need, even though my house is a total loss and two of my best, my three beloved pets perished. I know you all did your best. Today I am thankful for a few things, that my two boys were not at home when the fire started, that I was able to get out of the house and am here today, that my neighbors ran to my aid, called 911, and prevented me from going back in the house after my pets, and that you all came to help me that evening. I'm so grateful beyond words in this note, and the word thank you doesn't seem to be enough to say. Thank you and God bless. Rhonda Bennett, Jacob and..." I think that pretty much, you know, says it all, and that's what they're there for, and that's what they did that evening. So thank you Chief Benati, Chief Connolly, and everyone else that... I have an update on the Mineral Task Force membership as follows. The members are Dave Parent, Christopher Janest, Mark Curtis, Kevin McKeon, Jack McAdam, Paul St. Jean, Dana Peterson, Stephen Buck, the city manager, will serve as chair, and planning and code staff as determined and needed by the chair. I just want to say that these people were stakeholders who were chosen for their expertise and interest in crafting that ordinance, and if you remember, their timeline is May, March of 2022, I think. The Rail Trail Task Force membership is as follows, with one opening still to be filled, and they represent various stakeholders. Lawrence Furbish, Katie Menendez Hall, Steve Mallon, Kristen Seer, Jim Rue, Don Rue, Nick Taylor, Jeff Van Julen, Brian DeRoscher, and Dave Parent is designated to serve as the chair. And I think that, I'm just going to give a reminder based on some emails that I've been copied on. I just want a reminder that this group, they're charged with discussing issues of concern around the rail trail in an open-minded way that we hopefully lead to positive solutions. They will report back to the council in 60 days. Chair Parent understands his charge, and I ask that everyone give this committee a chance to do their work, and that includes counselors and all the other interested parties who tried over the last couple of years to help the problem and couldn't. So let's not lobby them, let's let them do their work. The amended council rules of procedure came back from the attorney late Friday, and I decided I didn't have sufficient time to sit down and really give them what I thought the attention they deserved. So I'm going to have to ask that you all wait until our next regular meeting when I plan to have them present. And finally, under my mayor's report, at our last meeting, under public comment, we received eight letters of complaint presented by an attorney, Christian Collins, on behalf of various businesses and individuals. And I made a decision in consultation with the council and the city manager that the nature of the complaints would be best served with an independent review of the comments and allegations. We have engaged an attorney, his name is James Katsiopikas, and this independent and confidential review will result in a report back to the council, and this report will be made public at its conclusion. Are there any questions regarding the mayor's report for many councils? Any? So I'm going to just go on to my subcommittee reports that I chaired, the municipal operations and property subcommittee report. Most items discussed were recommended for action by the council, and they are on the agenda this evening. We also had a discussion and review of the airport advisory committee at the request of Counselor Tuttle. He agreed that the committee meets on a bi-monthly basis with adequate local representation and functions well. No changes are planned at this time, and I will plan to attend the next airport advisory committee. Current road projects were discussed, and a request was made to have an updated list available and easily accessed by the public on the city website. Public safety, police department grant applications were discussed. Deputy Chief Anderson and Lee Burnett updated us on two different applications. The first would address speeding and distracted driving and allow for 170 hours of targeted enforcement. Second grant, a cops grant, would pay for 75% of salary and benefits to officers dedicated to community-oriented policing services. Officer Eric Small's work with the homeless and addicted populations would be a qualified use for this grant, and we could add an officer to concentrate on people in crisis. The grant would allow us to transfer local resources currently paying for Officer Small, other local needs such as a dedicated traffic officer. A draft our ordinance was presented by Deputy Chief Strout that would deal with false alarms. It needs further revision, but will be brought forward at a future council meeting. And finally, Officer Small gave a very comprehensive update on homeless encampment cleanups that were accomplished with the help of volunteers, including members of the Rotary, Kiwanis, Elks, and owners of the properties in question. It's important to state that the camps were empty, and all homeless individuals he encounters are offered and aided in accessing the services that they need. Unless there's any other questions from counselors regarding those two subcommittees, I think everything on the zoning subcommittee, there's an agenda item for that this evening, so we'll wait for that agenda item to come up, but I think solid waste had a report.
Solid waste did meet. As you said, zoning and solid waste are both at last Tuesday. Solid waste continues to have, I think, a very important discussion around litter in the community and how we can organize around getting the litter picked up and venting excessive litter in the future. Once again, I'm going to pick on Counselor Hanselman, who is kind of, she's not on the solid waste committee, but is one of the driving forces behind this. And again, I think it was a very productive meeting, but go ahead, Anne, you can speak to some of the ideas that were brought forth.
Thank you Counselor Stackpole. I'm really excited, as you spoke to it, it's something, it's an issue in our community and one that's been addressed by a lot of our community members. But I think what's exciting is it's an example of some really great partnership, both within the city, so interdepartmental partnership, where we're looking at having public works as well as our police department work together in a litter effort. Officer Small's volunteered to be kind of a key player, and of course, Matt Hill would be as well. So I think that's exciting. And then one of the concepts brought up, I think by Matt Hill, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor Stackpole, but was the idea of doing kind of a mini-grant concept between the city and partnership organizations in the community that want to spearhead efforts. And so the city basically would allow for the disposal of the waste collected, as well as potentially some other supplies and/or cover some small expenses. So you're just supporting community efforts to that end. And then there was also discussion around, and I think we'll hear more about this in the future and have more conversations, but having Sanford actually be designated as a Keep America Beautiful affiliate, which is a bit of a process, but could be a really exciting opportunity to jump into a really well-established national program to address litter that has seemed to be very successful and have a lot of, you know, there's some funding opportunities and other exciting aspects of it. So like you said, I think we're off to some really great conversations, and it's going to be headed somewhere that will really make a difference.
Thank you. That sounds great. Any questions from any counselors? Okay, then I think we'll go on to the city manager's report. Steve, all yours.
Okay, quickly on COVID, it is approximately 71,442 vaccinations that have been given here in New York County. You've got the total in here from York Hospital Vaccination Clinic, I believe is now closed down. Sanford Vaccination Clinic shows zeros for all of these because it was yesterday's data, all of these clinics are closed. Sanford Vaccination Clinic, you'll see later in the report, is standing up until the end of June, close at that point in time. Incident management team, for which our paramedics have been an integral part of, have done 4,517, not counting the vaccinations that they've done at the clinics themselves. The FEMA Biddeford Van, we've been going around remotely, has done 2,277, and the school clinics year-to-date have done 1,308. I believe they're going back next week with the week after to start doing second round of vaccinations for the Sanford Biddeford, I think Massabeast High School. CDC reported 42 new cases, zero additional deaths. Currently are down to 14 outbreaks in York County, has 529. Currently 96 in the hospital, 36 in ICU beds, and 20 on ventilators. Keep wishing that 20 would go down on the ventilators, but it has not. Looking at our local and state data, I've put the numbers in here for comparison, state being at 60.5% first dose, York County at 59.76. Second dose statewide is 59.16, somewhere 58.24 here in York County, catching up. Looking at our Sanford and Springvale specific, this is a graph that I pulled the state's data from. Currently, between the two zip codes, has been 1,738 confirmed cases of COVID-19, representing 8.26% population overall. You can see that that curve has started to flatten out, increasing at a much slower rate than it was earlier this year. Looking at the zip code specific, you can see that we're in the category of greater than 60% of our residents have been vaccinated, but we still have greater than 2,000 residents remaining in each of those two zip codes that should be vaccinated if they're willing and able to do that. They've not updated the number since the last time I checked, which is currently still rated at 60% for Sanford zip code and 61% for Springvale zip code. I don't know the period of time, how quickly they're updating the specific data set. I've got the county dashboard in here, so you can look at individual counties overall and compare, comparison to where we're at. Cumberland County still leads the pack at 65.62% first vaccinations. York County is currently at 52.7. Allocation's coming for next week, 21,420 doses of Pfizer, 15,400 of Moderna, no doses of J&amp;J because we have adequate inventory on hand. That ends the COVID and Corona vaccination updates. The American Recovery Plan, been working with the Finance Director. Tomorrow, we have another educational session we'll be attending, put on by the Maine Municipal Association, federal guidance for the use of the ARP funds. Educators will be from the National League of Cities, as well as the Maine Department of Financial and Administrative Services. There has been much input to the fact that the use of the ARP funds left open-ended, yet the guidance provided to date seems anything but open for allowable and useful uses. Council will start a review of the results starting on June 15th, meeting 2021. We have a potential list built, our current understanding of what those ARP funds could be utilized for, hopes that the in-depth, a two-and-a-half-hour-long session tomorrow, give insight to us, find more allowable uses as far as the ARP funds are. Talking with the mayor, calling for a special meeting for the city council to put its directions in its final adoption of the municipal budget, pending the legislature's close, state's adoption of any remaining biennial budget adjustments as governor's budget amendments, which is represented under LD 221. Two of the major elements of the municipal interest in there is the 55% funding for EPS, central programs and services for our school. Additional amount of $840,582 would come from that, as well as municipal revenue sharing. Currently, our budget book carries the state's last estimate of 5%, up from the prior 3.75% on revenue sharing, but that was based on an older forecast of state revenues. You know now that the state's budgeting forecast committee has increased state revenues by as much as $1 billion over the biennial. Currently, in our budget book, we're carrying revenue sharing at $3,695,000. That was a $520,000 increase over prior year. Current views are that the state's actions articulate bipartisan support for at least a 4.5% secured in the governor's budget adjustments, as well as many predicting that the legislature has enough support on a bipartisan basis to restoring revenue sharing to the full 5% as is in the current. Looking at what those numbers would look like for the city, if it's at the current state level at 3.75%, we'd actually take a reduction of $185,000 because, bear in mind that we are projecting on 5% at a lower performance level, because that's what the state law had called out, and that's what the state forecasting community is supporting forward. If it's at the 4.5%, as the governor is currently carrying in her budget amendments, we'd see an increase of $373,000 over what's in our budget book. And if it comes in at the 5%, which is the expectation, we'd see an increase of $745,000 in comparison to what's carried in our budget book. Still do not have any further reporting as far as any changes to the homestead exemption. The current budget is carrying the homestead at 75% and at $55,000 per. Testing Department, I talked to George Green, our assessor, again today, looking for further information as far as numbers that we'll use for the June 15th as well as June 22nd. Worked with the city council, committed to not raising the residential values to any greater than 91% of what the certification will be at the state level, but he indicates that he's going to have a hard time holding that line because of property values continue to increase on a daily basis. So we'll report out on that for the June 15th. And as indicated, I will report out on, during the 15th meeting, with the full accounting of the impacts that we know at that point in time from the state legislature, as well as budget amendments that we're carrying in our book, as well as utilization of the ARP funds. Report out to the city council on the 15th, with the expectation that there'll be a special meeting on June 22nd, post-closure of the legislature, for the council to take its final action and adopt a municipal portion of the budget for this year. Thank you.
Okay, I see Counselor Stackpole's hand is up. You have a question for the city manager?
Yeah, just, it's not really a question, but Steve, can we send some email notification out to the budget committee, let them know we'll be discussing final details and making, on the 15th, and hopefully making some final decisions on the 22nd, just so they're notified and continue to be part of, part of the loop here. We'll keep them in the loop. Thanks.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the city manager? Thank you, Steve. Okay, communications and presentations, there are none. Public participation, for items that are not on the agenda, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening? Do you see any hands up, Marissa? Because I don't. I don't think so. Okay, I'm going to skip over public participation. Public hearings, there are none. On the consent agenda, there is one item on the consent agenda. If there are no objections and hearing none, then I will declare the consent agenda moot. Old business. 21-266-01, confirm the findings and order a judging 18 Winter Street tax map K28, Lot 67, be a dangerous building and a nuisance pursuant to 17 MRSAs sections 2851 to 2859 at the hearing held on May 18th, 2021, and authorize the city manager to sign the findings and order for the city council, and have the city clerk record it in the registry of deeds and advertise it, and advertise or serve it upon the owner and parties in interest as required by law. I will ask for a motion since I think this is a self-explanatory item, and we can have discussion after the fact. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Hanselman. I'm going to ask Ian to just, unless there's a question, I think this is a pretty simple item that we're doing. Ian, can I turn it over to you?
Yes, and I'm sorry that I'm not, I don't have a camera in front of me right now, but it is a very procedural item. It's really just confirming that you took the following or the prior actions that you did at the last city council meeting, and then what this is doing, authorizing the city manager to sign on the city council's behalf.
Thank you. And basically the same for the next two items on, so...
Exactly.
Is there any discussion from the council? Any further discussion? Don't see any hands up, so I will call the roll. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle is absent with notice. Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan is absent with notice. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is a motion five to zero. Next item, 21-267-01, confirm the findings and order a judging 28 Emory Street tax map J31, Lot 3, be a dangerous building and a nuisance pursuant to 17 MRSAs sections 2851 to 2859 at the hearing held on May 18th, 2021, and authorize the city manager to sign the findings and order for the city council, and have the city clerk record it in the registry of deeds and advertise or serve it upon the owner and parties in interest as required by law. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Martell. Is there any further discussion necessary? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle is absent with notice. Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan is absent with notice. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. 21-268-01, confirm the findings and order a judging 37 Montreal Street tax map H27, Lot 10, to be a dangerous building and a nuisance pursuant to 17 MRSAs sections 2851 to 29, the hearing held on May 18th, 2021, authorize the city manager to sign the findings and order for the city council, have the city clerk record it in the registry of deeds, and advertise or serve it upon the owner and parties in interest as required by law. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Hanselman. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle is absent with notice. Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan is absent with notice. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that is unanimous of all those present. Okay, that's all the old business. Let's go on to new business. Thank you, Ian. 21-252-01, order to award the city's West Side Plow bid contract to C.A. Plant and Sons of Springdale, Maine, for the 2021, 22, 22, 23, and 23, 24 winter seasons. I'm going to turn this over for an explanation first, and then I'll ask for a motion. Is that, is it Matt Hill that's going to do this, Steve?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Matt, calls in your court.
Good evening. The Department of Public Works re-advertised for the expired West Side Plumbing contract for the '21 through '24 winter seasons, and held a public bid opening on May 12th, 2021. The department received one bid for the work, of being C.A. Plant and Sons of Springdale, Maine, who is also our current East Side Plow contractor. The '21-'22 season was 127,400, '22-'23 was 130,000, and '23-'24 was 132,600. We budgeted $118,450 for the '21-'22 season, which was before these bids were opened, and therefore the current budget as proposed for the '21-'22 season falls short of the necessary amount. The department's first preference would be for the city to amend the corresponding budget proposals to carry the unpaid amount, updated amount, upon acceptance of the bid. Otherwise, the department will need to absorb these costs into its operating budget, which has done so in the past. C.A. Plant and Sons is a contractor in good standing with the City of Sanford, and has consistently successfully performed the East Side Plow contract for many years. The department finds their snow removal operation responsible, dependable, and emergency situations as required by the contract. We therefore recommend the acceptance of the bid from C.A. Plant and Sons. We therefore recommend the acceptance of the bid from C A Plant and Sons for the West Side Plow Bid as proposed.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna ask for a motion and a second, and then the council can discuss. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move, we approve.
Who was it that said that? Was that Council Stackpole with a motion to approve?
Move to approve, yeah.
I'll second that.
There's a second by Council Martell. Does anyone have any questions or discussion, um, around this time? And it was, I conceive it, Council Hanselman has her hand up. Go ahead, Council Hanselman.
And I'll just disclose, I had a concerned citizen, um, move this forward, uh, to me. So essentially the question came up is, and I assume that, um, Matt's determined that this is the case, but, um, concerned that they didn't have the equipment or staffing levels necessary to cover both east and west side. Um, but I assume as part of the process, Matt, that we determined or they've proved to us via, um, their bid that they have the ability to actually do both contracts.
Uh, yes, part of the contract documents, they're required to submit an equipment list and fill plow routes, and we've also amended the contract to make sure that they have a minimum number of trucks responding, uh, as required to fill those routes. So if they don't have it now, uh, upon a word of the contract, they would have to gear up and do so.
Thank you so much.
Can I just follow up on that, Matt? I mean, and I, so what would be the process if we were in the middle of this contract and, and we had a really busy snow season? What, what would happen if they weren't able to do in the manner that we expect them?
So before each season, we have what's called a pre-plow meeting where we coordinate all the departments of the city and emergency responders and our contractors, including C A Plant, uh, attend the pre-plow meeting. Uh, we go over expectations for the, for the season, uh, for the contract, and we also schedule inspections of contractors' equipment at the pre-plow meeting. The garage maintenance supervisor and the highways director, uh, perform those inspections and make sure that their equipment is adequate and, uh, ready to go for the season.
Thank you. That is very informative. Any other questions before we vote on this item? Being none, then I will call the roll. Council Martell.
Yes.
Council Hanselman.
Yes.
Tuttle is absent with notice. Council Stackpole.
Yes.
Council Lanigan is absent with notice. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Twenty-one dash two five seven dash zero one. Order to accept a bid from Arundel Ford for two seven-fifty class plow trucks with wing and sander and one five-fifty class plow truck with wing and sander to replace city vehicles oh-four thirteen, oh-two forty-six, and oh-nine sixteen. Matt, I'll get, let you give the explanation before we ask for a motion.
Great. Uh, the Sanford Vehicle and Equipment Capital Improvement Program, uh, fleet replacement schedule and proposed budget currently call for the replacement of three fleet trucks being oh-four thirteen. Uh, just for those at home, uh, the first number is the year of the trucks, so oh-four thirteen, so it's a seventeen-year-old truck, oh-two forty-six, a nineteen-year-old truck, and oh-nine sixteen, which should be a twelve-year-old truck. Uh, the department has proposed to replace them with two seven-fifty class trucks with plowing and sander and one five-fifty class with plow, wing, and sander. The, the department continues to face several vehicles that are in the process of aging out and are harder to, uh, find replacement parts for. Therefore, the department advertised and opened bids for the three trucks as noted above on April eighth, twenty-twenty-one. The bids received were from Arundel Ford of Arundel Maine. Uh, between the three trucks, it totaled three hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. These vehicles are considered frontline snow response vehicles utilized for winter emergency road treatment to keep the city passable during Maine's long winters. Given current market conditions, these vehicles need to be ordered as soon as possible in order for the Department of Public Works to continue to responsibly protect the city's infrastructure with reasonable response, response times. Delivery on these trucks is currently estimated between six and twelve months. Uh, so as discussed with the fleet management team, the department has the following commitments, uh, in the C I P, Equipment C I P Budget Line forthcoming, uh, these, uh, this bid, um, the ten-wheel plow truck, which was council-approved, that's the one that, um, was recently approved for a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And then the next item we're considering is three sidewalk tractors. So the total proposed encumbrances is just shy of nine hundred thousand dollars, and the total available funding, uh, would be just over nine hundred thousand dollars. So we therefore recommend accepting the bid from Arundel Ford and H P Fairfield, uh, which is, supplies the equipment in the interests of expedient delivery of necessary frontline vehicle replacements for the upcoming season. This approval will be explicit consideration of the council that passed it currently proposed DPW Equipment C I P Budget and the amount of five hundred thousand dollars as recommended by the city manager.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
That is a motion by Council Hanselman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Hurley. Do any councils have any questions of, um, Matt?
These are, these are the ones that are delayed, right, anyway, so?
I see Council Hanselman's hand is up.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just want to share my excitement over the summary of, um, the, you know, addressing where the funds are coming from and what's remaining, the budget. This is really helpful in the packet to see in advance, so I appreciate, um, and these are, this would be great to see even moving forward, um, in additional, um, requests. So thank you for doing that.
And Council Martell, your hand is up.
Yeah, I just, so we're just voting on the five hundred thousand for this year's budget? Is that, is that correct?
No. Go ahead, um, no.
Uh, no, this is, this is, um, just for two Ford seven-fifties with plowing and sander and one Ford five-fifty with plowing and sander.
Okay, so just let's read it.
The purchase of them is, is contingent upon approval of the currently proposed five hundred thousand dollars of Equipment C I P Budget. Uh, to answer Deputy Mayor Hurley's question, um, the five-fifty they're projecting would be available before this winter, but, uh, the seven-fifties would not.
Okay.
Are there, are there any other questions or concerns or comments? Steve, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, to comment here that this is the department rightsizing itself, so not, not different from the Fire Department where we, uh, fully assess the type and number of apparatus. Uh, with the department shifting its focus towards heavily on maintenance, propose to full construction, we can downsize, uh, the equipment that we need year-round, also in response to getting a more appropriately sized, the F seven-fifties and five-fifties to get those inside the small and tighter streets, uh, that we have and not use the large six-wheel units, um, for that type of operations. Uh, the other thing this represents is these, these, uh, for example, the seven-fifties are well in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, less expensive than the typical six-wheeler that we utilize for the, so give us a lower cost of operation and give us a lower cost of capital going forward in the future. And again, it's rightsizing the department. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Um, any other questions? Okay, I will call the roll. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Council Martell.
Yes.
Council Hanselman.
Yes.
So Tuttle is absent. Council Stackpole.
Yes.
So Lanigan is absent. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
And I am a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Twenty-one dash two five eight dash zero one. Order to accept a bid for three new sidewalk tractors from Chadwick Bay Ross of Westbrook, Maine. Matt, I'm assuming you're gonna continue presenting?
Yes. So one of the issues that came up this winter quite a lot is our ability to address the sidewalk, uh, sidewalks getting iced over in the winter, uh, and we've, we've been kind of keeping these three trackless unit, trackless is a brand name, we've been keeping these three trackless units going for quite a while. We recently reached out and got a, another M V five in order to try to address them, but we're, we're looking at replacing the, um, well, I'll just read the letter here. So that, the C I P for the equipment, uh, fleet management schedule and proposed budget currently call for the replacement of three sidewalk snowplow tractors. Uh, so again, the first two numbers in the city vehicle, um, unit of the year, so oh-five fifty-two, oh-five fifty-three, and oh-six thirty. So those are sixteen and fifteen-year-old machines. Uh, the department has proposed to replace them with three identical make and model units for ease of maintenance. We continue to face several vehicles that are in the process of aging out. The sidewalk trackless units are amongst those. Uh, therefore, the department advertised and opened bids for the three sidewalk tractors as noted above on April twenty-first. Bids received as follows. Chadwick Bay Ross of Westbrook, Maine, uh, three holder units for a total of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-four, and then H P Fairfield of Scoweegan, Maine, for three trackless units in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and change. These vehicles are considered front, frontline snow response vehicles, as I mentioned, uh, and they're used for winter emergency treatment to keep the sidewalk, sidewalks passable during Maine's long winters. Uh, frequent breakdowns of age units have delayed treatments considerably over the past few years. So as discussed with the fleet management team, the department has the following commitments, uh, that we just previously discussed, uh, seven-fifty and five-fifty trucks, the ten-wheel plow truck that's on order, then these three sidewalk tractors, so that's a revised amount because I issued this letter second, is just over nine hundred thousand dollars, uh, that would be encumbered, and the, uh, budget available is, you know, nine hundred and thirty-two. So we have nine hundred and thirty-two, we need to spend nine hundred and seven. Uh, therefore, the Department of Public Works recommends accepting bids from Chadwick Bay Ross in the interest of expedient delivery, necessary frontline vehicles, uh, for the upcoming season. These would be delivered, uh, before snow flies. The approval would be the explicit consideration that council passed currently proposed C I P Budget, the amount of five hundred thousand dollars as recommended by the city manager. Uh, also, you know, during the subcommittee meeting, it came up that, you know, we need to be sure that we have something heavy in case, you know, snow freezes or packs in on sidewalks and, you know, becomes impassable. We used to have, um, more durable, um, it kind of looked like a mini tank to break open sidewalks but, like that. But if we are out there treating those sidewalks just after the storm and just after we do the roads and we have three units or four units or five units that are operational, you know, theoretically that snow doesn't get packed onto those sidewalks and we, we hit them at an appropriate time instead of letting the ice and, and stuff really chunk up and become, uh, so that you'd have to get the bombardier out there. And the bombardier, like I said, it looked like a tank, it had a great big V blade on it, and, uh, was, was a hulk of a machine.
Thank you, Matt. Um, can I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
A motion by Council Hanselman to approve and a second by Council Martell. Discussion by the council first. I do see a member of the public who has their hand up, but I would like to know first if there are any questions from the council. I don't see any, so Diane, go ahead, you have a question?
Yes, Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
I can.
Uh, what's, the three trackless units that we're getting or the new ones, does this include, uh, the one that was going back with the lemon law?
No, it doesn't at this time. We're still talking to, uh, the city's council about that and, and just what we want to do. We haven't made a determination on that. This is, these are three one-for-one replacements at this time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Diane. Uh, any other questions from councilors? Any more discussion? Motion on the table, I will call the roll. Council Martell.
Yes.
Council Hanselman.
Yes.
Council Tuttle is absent. Council Stackpole.
Yes.
Council Lanigan is absent. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. I hate to say anything, but we're moving through these things, guys. Uh, twenty-one dash two six two dash zero one. Order to authorize the city manager to enter into a three-year Goodall Park lease agreement with the Sanford Mainers. Who's gonna present this this evening, Steve?
Uh, if you want, Brian, I'll start off and then you can add, uh, as, as necessary.
That sounds good, Steve.
All right, let's do the presentation and then I'll ask for a motion after.
All right, so this is a three-year, uh, renewal of the lease agreement between the, uh, Mainers and city for the use of the Goodall Park. Very happy to bring this forward. Uh, love, love the fact that the Mainers are gonna resume the season this year. Very happy about that. As far as the basic agreement, uh, virtually no change as far as the basic agreement is concerned. It's four hours prior to the start of each game. The, the facilities are there for their use. Utilization of the field dugout stands and adjacent parking lot and the fence, related facilities, including the press box, sound system, and scoreboard, known to be the Goodall Park. I have the definition in there for the team, uh, and the, and the utilization of the facilities themselves. Term of the agreement is a three-year agreement being proposed. Fees, uh, the team shall pay, uh, a sum of three hundred dollars during the lease period per game, including exhibition and playoff games. Payments shall include the use of the facility, including maintenance and upkeep of the field, payment for the lighting and use of the electricity. That amount should be due to the payable, due and payable upon the receipt of the invoice. They also will pay an additional twenty-five cents per attendee for attendance over four hundred and fifty. They'll pay an additional fifty cents per attendee for attendance six hundred. Should there be, uh, playoff games, uh, and or makeup games, uh, they will pay the same requisite fees for each of those. Again, there's forty to forty-two games in the regular season. Playoffs and or tournament games, they will play, pay based upon the same fee schedule. Uh, in the event that there are makeups because of rain, rain, the city, the parks department will work with them for setting, uh, dates. Agree. Concessions, uh, they, they have the exclusive right for the concession stand area and to bring other concessions on during the games. No change there. Signs and fences, no cha, change here is either. Uh, they have the right to place signs, advertisement signs. Uh, they cannot have references to alcohol or tobacco, not be allowed there as well. New element for this year is the subsection eight, so for the first time, they're going to be connected to Sanford Net Fiber. They do provide internet access at no cost over Sanford Net Fiber via a virtual local area network that allows them to access the city's shared bandwidth over fiber system, allows their signals to pass to, to and from, uh, our network, but without allowing them access to our network, reference to a virtual, uh, local area network for their use for the broadcasting, video and sound signals and other communications associated with the effect of games. Demnification, they'll carry a million-dollar policy in demnifying the city and naming us additionally insured. Governing laws and severability. Some modifications can only be made by mutual agreement. That is the basis of the entire agreement. And if you have any comments as far as the utilization of the park or maintenance?
No, it's pretty much covers everything. Now, it's an exciting time to see the boys back, uh, playing ball down at the ballpark, high school game tonight, and then Babe Ruth after the high school game, and we saw the Mainers have practice this morning, uh, on the field. It's, it's, uh, really exciting to see everybody utilizing that special field down there, so, excited to see baseball back.
I might not be, I, I might not be, because I've been ordering, I've been ordering concession stand stuff all day.
I'm gonna order, I'm gonna ask for a, a, a motion to, um, to approve before we begin discussion, so if I can have that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from Council Martell and a second from Council Stackpole, I think?
Yes.
Okay, I see Council Stackpole's hand up, so I'm assuming he has a question or a comment.
Yeah, just, just some clarification around, uh, electricity. Uh, Steve, it's, you know, I, I get the three hundred dollar amount, is, is there an additional? Do they reimburse the city?
We have our, we have an electric bill, Bob. Uh, Mainers pay an electric bill in the summer.
Is there any other discussion? And I think the opening game is Friday, correct? Did somebody say that already and I missed it?
It's Friday night, um, the first pitch is at six-thirty, the gates open at five-thirty, as does the concession stand, which is all I care.
Apologize for my dog bark. Motorcycle, sorry.
I think people are excited, though.
I think they are.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Still gonna have strawberry shortcake?
Yes. I ju, I just ordered the biscuits, I just ordered strawberries. I just ordered pork. And this year, I'm gonna announce that this year we, um, after, oh, fifteen-plus years, Sanford House of Pizza is taking a break, and Bubba Fries will be providing the pizza for the Sanford Mainers this year, so we will have a change in that regard. So, um, yeah, I think I'm looking forward to that, and we just heard today that the booster truck has decided they do want to do a few games, so hopefully they will be joining us for several games and I, I'm hoping for very- I I'm hoping for a very busy season.
So in other words, you can go down and get supper?
Yep.
And watch a baseball game.
And watch a baseball game and believe it or not, it's 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 really social. People have a wonderful time chit chatting between innings and it's fun.
Sounds like it'll be good to get back to some normalcy.
I think so. And believe it or not, if if uh the one of the biggest questions I've had is how did you do finding host families? Because everybody would assume it would be a difficult thing with the with COVID ending. We did not have nearly as much problem as we usually do. We're usually scampering at the end to get host families. We filled the host families uh and got them into host families quite easily this year, which is nice to see. People are excited to be back.
Okay, if there's no other discussion or comments, I'm gonna call the roll. Counsel Martel?
Yes.
Counsel Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle is absent. Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Sir Lanigan is absent. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all. Okay, twenty one dash two seven O dash zero one. Ordered to accept a construction bid from Sargent Corporation for the reconstruction of Shaw, Kimball, Prescott and Twombly. Known preliminary and final public hearings as the Westside Village Project in Sanford, Maine. Um, Matt is going, is Matt gonna begin this or Steve? Matt, okay, we'll turn it over to Matt.
Okay, well, the Sanford roadway capital improvement program identified the need and purpose for the reconstruction of Shaw, Prescott, Kimball from Maine to Twombly and Twombly Road from Maine to Kimball hereafter known as the Westside Village. This targeted effort is part of our larger, part of a larger plan of downtown revitalization as this neighborhood sits wedged between walkable portions of urban Main Street through one oh nine and the city's parks facilities at Goodall Park and Ben playground. Therefore, the city engaged our consultants and developed a full reconstruction set for the roadways, on-street parking, sidewalks, drainage and other associated impacts. The Public Works Department facilitated two public hearings regarding the project being preliminary on August twentieth of twenty twenty, final on February eleventh of twenty one. The city received final bids, uh, sorry, final plans and bid documentation on April seventh and advertised them for construction on April eighth of twenty twenty one. Bids were opened on April twenty ninth with one proposed bidder being the Sargent Corporation of Stillwater, Maine. Sargent is a reputable contractor in good standing with the Maine Department of Transportation. Recently also won a bid award for construction at the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. The original bid amount received was over budget and the Sanford Department of Public Works and the Sanford Sewage District, who are participating utility, met to negotiate the proposed scope and fee for the project with Sargent. Subsequent to negotiations, which included both innovations and concessions from all involved, Sargent revised their overall bid price to two point, just over two point two million dollars, which does not include several items that were broken out from the project for which the city will have to use uh pre-existing contractual rates. While the bid amount currently will expend the available CIP funding available for this project and ideally not affect the remainder of the projects and annual efforts program for this construction season, some assurances have been provided that additional contingency funding may be available if needed through national infrastructure investment programs. In any case, the city will need to have onsite construction inspection to ensure the standard project coordination, contract extension, uh, sorry, execution and to handle resident and butter concerns expeditiously. As the department reduces the budget, this responsibility will be taken by myself uh to act as a resident engineer for the Westside Village. On approval from the property subcommittee, this issue, the city has issued temporary easement documents for residents' consideration and anticipation of work proceeding forward uh for which we received about a half a dozen returned today. Everyone was very excited that it was going forward. Therefore, the Department of Public Works or was going to be considered to be going forward. Therefore, the Department of Public Works recommends accepting the bid from Sargent Corporation in the amount of two point two, sorry, two million two hundred eighty two thousand three hundred and one dollars. Uh, this approval would be with the explicit consideration of the council passed that currently proposed fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget as currently recommended by the city manager. I've tasked, I have attached a spreadsheet cost estimate to this letter uh of the project noting contract items belonging to Sargent, participating items uh which would be Sanford Sewage District and non-participating items which are now would now fall under the city's pre-existing contractual rates. That would be coordinated and paid separately. Uh, it should be noted that moving this project forward continues the commitment from the city of Sanford towards building momentum towards our economic revitalization. The reconstruction of the Westside Village has been a major aspect of infrastructure investment in relation to the city's partnership with Maine DOT to reconstruct downtown by demonstrating that the city is making continuous ancillary improvements. Keeping our annual efforts on schedule and on budget will be advantageous towards fulfilling our future year commitments with Maine DOT and private investment for the city of Sanford. Forging strong relationships in both the public and private sector will reap rewards for our common benefit. So uh Steve is showing the uh spreadsheet that I've broken out with those items. Uh, in yellow are the items that are participating with the Sanford Sewage District. And red are the ones that would be broken out to our existing contracts. And uh kind of non-participating stuff, you see that. I've also received a memo from Andre Bruso at the Sanford Sewage District. Uh, to me dated today, the Sanford Sewage District has spent a considerable amount of time exploring the condition of the sanitary sewer collection system in the Westside Village area. The assessment utilized to form the program which determines the overall condition of the pipe has been going on for the past couple of years. They also hired a subcontractor to inspect private laterals. Sanford Sewage District performed a smoke test to verify all the known and unknown observations. Uh, the smoke test did turn up illegal connections to the top of Kimball Street. So basically, uh, the Sanford Sewer District um board has not said yea or nay on this. This is over budget for them too at this point. Uh, but as Andre put it to me today, there's no better time for them to go in there and do this work. So if they need to right-size their scope in order to make it work for their budget, um, that's up to them. Or they could opt not to uh make their investment. But as the, some of those pipes are quite old, um, it would be a very good idea for them to do so, but it's it's still really up to them.
Okay, before we go on to discussion by the council, unless Steve, you have something to add to the presentation, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve.
I think what I will add is when we look at the multi-year program, available resources for this year, uh, given this this bid is accepted tonight, uh, and I'm trying to remember the bottom line number, if it was five or eight thousand dollars worth of buffer that we have in the entire program for the entire year. So it it is tight. That's using up a hundred percent of our contingency that is broken.
That's, yeah, that's that's a difficult thing to do and and I'm I'm well, if, you know, uh, you've kind of, you know, you've made some commitment and I heard I heard some here tonight about the transportation infrastructure, uh, monies that may be available. If if we can get some to use those as contingency or or security in there so that we um can make sure we don't go over budget, that would really help out a lot.
Okay, can I just have a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Counsel Stackpole. That is a motion to approve by Counsel Stackpole. Is there a second?
A second, ma'am.
Second by Counsel Hanselman. Okay, discussion by the council. I um, I'm not gonna ask. I have a couple of questions, but I would really like to hear from um, I see Counsel Martel's hand is up. You first and then Counsel Hanselman is second.
I think you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
We sure can.
Okay, sorry. I'm not sure how that happened. Anyway, um, I had a resident reach out to me this morning um with some concerns around um some driveway entrances. Apparently they have two, two driveways because they've got mul-, they have a uh, a lot that's sized for two, like a double lot. Um, is there any sort of um something in this project to allow for uh multiple cuts for a single lot or to kind of work with that person to mitigate their concerns? I know it's probably pretty minor at this point, but.
Uh, I have been. I have been contacted by one resident on Twombly who basically is is using kind of like a flush portion of the sidewalk, I guess, as a second entrance. So uh, you know, Sanford ordinance says that each lot is guaranteed one entrance. It it, you know, a double lot or size for a double lot, I mean, that's I'd have to take a closer look at it. Uh, we are willing to work with people, but we also want to practice good access management and make sure that, you know, they're not doing something they shouldn't.
Okay, yeah, it's probably, it sounds like it's probably the same resident. Um, if you'd be willing to have a chat with them, I think that would be good. I appreciate that.
Counsel Hanselman?
Yes, first, a quick comment that, you know, this is exciting. And a couple of years ago, before we passed the bond, um, this, you know, might have felt really out of reach if not even been been possible, right? So exciting to have this in front of us. Um, it's kind of a two-part question. One, I just wanted to check on the timeframe of this um in terms of when we would see work begin and end. And obviously uh, those are the rough dates. And then kind of as a follow-up, I I believe it was discussed at um operations subcommittee last week. There, I was looking for some kind of um flyer or list that we can share with residents who, you know, might see work going on in one area and wonder why it's not happening in another and that sort of thing. So I don't know if there's progress on that either.
Yeah, uh, to answer your question, Counsel Hanselman, um, we're gonna have to revisit the schedule seriously. You know, originally this project was supposed to wrap up, you know, mid-October. Depending on Sargent's response, I mean, if they have four crews here next week, you know, I don't see any issue. Uh, but we all know construction industry is is very hot right now and it really depends on their response. It could turn into a two-season job. You know, ideally, I I think probably the best case scenario at this point is we get to, you know, base pavement and setting the drainage structures flush with the base pavement. And uh, probably paving next spring. But again, it really depends on on their schedule and what they have available. It's gonna be continuing negotiation.
Can I just add something to what Counsel Hanselman said, though? I think that what she really is asking for and what we discussed is, and and we're not saying that we're gonna hold you to it, but the planned the things you're gonna try to accomplish, it would be nice for us to be able to have a list or a list that was easily accessed on the main page of the city's website. Here's the projects. One page, what we're gonna do in the next six months. Not even ask it. I don't care what you're gonna do a year and a half from now. I mean, maybe, but at least I'd like to be able to say, here's what we're gonna do now. And maybe somebody will say, why isn't my road in there? And then we can go all the further, but at least it will give that basic. Am I correct, Counsel Hanselman?
Yes, that's exactly right. And obviously with a big disclaimer that, you know, this is our plan, but subject to change.
Yeah, we're not gonna hold people. We get that, yeah.
Yeah, and and actually, so to address the second part of your question. So there are several documents that you're gonna find this information in. You're right, it's not right up front. You you do have to dig for it. So so one is we had the presentation from last year about what the twenty twenty season was and what would be coming up in twenty one. Uh, we also have the pavement moratorium list, which uh documents everything that's really happened that's under moratorium in the last five years. And also is also projecting what's gonna be happening this year so that you can get your um underground work done. I I've been revising the plan, the five-year plan with the city manager and the finance director, but it's contingent upon whether this project is going forward this year or not. If this turns into a two-year project, uh, there's gonna be additional costs. You know, think of it that say, so say this year we do drainage and replace utilities. Well, that's gonna be have to be covered up with temporary pavement in order to get into next season. So that temporary pavement is not currently carried under you know, this project cost. This project's just paving it once. Uh, whereas if you were gonna carry it through for a season, now you're you're paying for that surface twice. And as far as the concerns about, um, you know, why work is going on here as opposed to maybe the next street over or or whatnot, uh, back when uh city manager and I went through the um, the roadway condition index report in twenty seventeen, we talked about uh how we were going to invest in the road strategically, uh, the roadway infrastructure strategically such that you know, full reconstruction for a road back then was a million dollars a mile and it's probably the case right now, it's it's much more than that. A crack seal is down at seven thousand a mile. So you can see, you know, if you have a hundred and eighty-four miles of road and at a million dollars, say, you stay, say you hold the million dollar a mile number, you're gonna get back to each mile of your road once every hundred and eighty-four years. So we we're decreasing the amount that's being put into the uh full reconstruction line. And we're increasing the amount that's being brought into the maintenance line. So once, once we have roads that are in good shape, we're spending more each year to keep those roads in good shape. But we also have to draw that money out of the the full reconstruction program. So you're gonna see less roads reconstructed, but you're gonna see the roads that are reconstructed maintained better. And at the time, you know, we we did a joint meeting with the council and and the planning board is, you know, that sometimes can be a very tough political uh pill to swallow that, hey, my road over here is falling apart. You're over on this road, which is in great shape and you're crack sealing it. Well, yes, that crack seal costs a lot less per mile. And we can afford to do that, whereas we can't get to reconstruct every road every year.
I see Counsel Stackpole's been, oh, go ahead. Do you want to say something, um, Steve, before?
Yeah, ba- back to the last question asked by Counsel Hanselman. So we have a one-pager for everything that's to be performed this year from from a reconstructive, a maintenance aspect and such under that. The thing that had prevented us from releasing that not knowing whether the council was going to accept this propose, this bid by Sargent for the Westside Village. If you accept that, you have all of that information is finalized at that point. Please that document showing the proportional utilization of resources on all of the various projects.
So Steve, you're holding my list hostage for a yes vote is what I just heard.
That's what he said.
Yeah, pretty much, yes. But it's because, you know, the largest number on that, the concentration this year is the Westside Village. So not knowing that number, that's that dictates everything else that we're doing for the years this.
Thank you very much.
And if it's a no vote, the the list will change. You know, you'll see, depending on which way the vote goes, you'll see a different list.
Okay, so Counsel Stackpole and then Counsel Martel.
Yeah, just just real quickly, I and I think we've already discussed this individual, but uh and I'm gonna, I'm gonna say his name. Uh, he called me this morning, uh, Richard Terrell or Terrell. Um, I asked him to come to the meeting this evening after counsel's comments to express his concerns. I sent him the information to call in, but I don't believe uh he's here or joined in. Uh, you know, I just want to get his ore in the water for him. I I know he said he was out of town later part of the day. So I mean, he's got a job like everybody else does. Uh, he was, he was pretty upset about, uh, again, I'm assuming he spoke with Jonathan also this morning. Uh, because he talked about not having access to his second driveway and those kind of things. Did mention he spoke with you, Matt. Um, and that, so I was, I was hoping we could uh uh, it it, you know, at least get organized, have some kind of discussion around his needs. So anyways, I I want to make sure he was represented because he did call us this morning. Uh, and he does have some concerns and there is a process, as you said, and I would hope that uh, I don't know, man, I, again, I know you've spoken to him, but maybe you could reach out to him again and see if there's anything that can be done to uh remediate the situation, uh, some kind of compromise or whatever, to get it done. We all want it to look nice. We all want it to be appropriate, uh, all those kinds of things. But whatever you can do, uh, I think you would appreciate it. So that's it.
Okay, Counsel Martel?
Okay, so um, I have a couple of concerns. One being I hear that what I seem to be hearing through the, you know, between the lines is we're really close to what our budget could be, uh, maybe a little bit over on some things to be able to to do this properly. Um, maybe you can kind of speak to that. And um, if we voted no on this or voted to kind of go back to the table to kind of um adjust what what this means, would that put a little bit more money to some of the other roads in the area? Because I've I've heard concerns from other uh constituents that their roads are in really bad shape and um they're hoping they can get some attention on those as well. So I hopefully can speak to that a little bit. Thank you.
Steve, do you have, uh, you know, I I think we've been talking back and forth a little bit of what what contingency funding might be available. And I don't know if I would try to address some of And I don't know if I would try to address some of those outstanding roads too. I don't know. I, I need to get a better handle on what those are and how much they'll cost.
So se- several thoughts to address, uh, Counselor Martell's concerns. So there, there is, there's nobody's road that doesn't need attention. So that's, that's why, uh, several years back, we went to the PCI, Pavement Condition Index Study. Politically, um, certain roads would get done or might get done or weren't getting done. But it's the PCI, the Pavement Conditioning Index. So that, the engineered study was put in place. Long-term program was developed based around that and sh- and shifting resources as Director Hill has stated. I give strong recognition, there are a couple of roads here in the community that have absolutely gone to pieces in that period of time, uh, that it's gonna force us to deviate from, uh, work plan as scheduled. When the bond was, when the bond was put out there, uh, a couple of years ago, request to the community to support the six-and-a-half million dollar bond and then the council's commitment to ramp that up. Entire programming was, was put in place, uh, next five years at a bare minimum. This, this Westside Village was the, uh, second-year implementation of that project. What you're seeing tonight is the result of, of over a million dollars' worth of overage being addressed through appropriate negotiations with the various vendors, utilization of local vendors in lieu of city supplying materials in lieu of and such under that, to get, get it back to a budget that's not over the current resources as allocated. Indication is, it's simply going to utilize one hundred percent of the contingencies. So there's absolutely no fluff. There is no room for error on any of these projects as currently scoped out in your plan. There's that piece. So if, if you accept this bid tonight, can move forward with your, uh, twenty-one calendar year program, accomplish the Westside Village, catch up for those projects that weren't completed last year. Those are called out in that budget book as well. To address the emergency roads that are not currently in this year's budget. When we look at the, uh, American Recovery Plan Funds, one of the allowable utilizations is in there, is you can take two different approaches towards the revenue recovery aspect. You can either compare year-over-year revenues. And, uh, if your revenues for the target year fall below the prior years, then you can use the assumption that it was the COVID that caused that reduction in revenues. And you're allowed to take those funds, consider those recovered funds, and then when those are recovered funds, they become available for utilization for certain category. City is not going, is choosing not to do that as far as an overall program, but we've gone in for the targeted elements that qualify for, uh, recovery of revenue. And we've identified over eight hundred thousand dollars' worth of funds that we can target in that way. Then there are, I mean, the primary allowable uses is for public infrastructure. Out of that, there's seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars that could be transferred for this year's and the next two years subsequent road programs to buffer the cost of what needs to get done. So you could u- utilize that seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to put a, a couple of additional emergency roads into this year's work plan and get those done. And then you'd utilize what my recommendation to you is going to be to utilize the overwhelming majority of the additional amount of that money. The remaining amount of money was buffering the fiscal impact from next year's CIP for, because when you're trying to get to the two-and-a-half million dollars next year, calls up for an additional six hundred thousand dollars in taxation to be raised in order to hit that two-and-a-half million. So it's a way to accomplish this year's programs, your emergencies in this year's program and offer the overwhelming majority of, of next year's additional call for taxation, continue the momentum on your multi-year projects. Those, the elements that I'll be discussing with you on June fifth.
Okay, any other questions about this project?
Just Counselor Stackpole, you rang a bell on, on Richard Terrell. I have spoken with him. He's, he's actually got two driveways on Lebanon Street, one of which looks like probably an easement for his neighbor. And he also wants two driveways on Twomley, which would just be for himself. So that, that's where we started from. He's got, he's got a lot of four.
Um, I, I, again, I just wanna ask, I saw somebody come in, um, Samsung, something. All I see is Samsung. Yes. I just wanna ask if Richard is here now. If not, you know, if it's all right with you, Mayor, he could comment, but, um, just wanna ask if he's here. If he isn't, we'll just.
I don't see any hands up.
Doesn't seem that he's here. It, yeah, anyways, Matt, any, I, I hear what you're saying. Uh, anything, I, I mean, he was pretty upset. So anything we can do to calm the waters here, I think would be, uh, positive. So, uh, we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I think he was concerned that he has another lot in the back there and he may consider selling that. Um, and wanted to maintain access that he needed. So hopefully you can work with him and get his concerns addressed.
Just have Counselor, Deputy Mayor Hurley, you have a question or a comment?
But even if he were to sell that lot in the back, he would only be allowed one driveway. So that's just a, you know, that's a, that's a reality. You're allowed one, the one driveway for a single-family lot. So he wouldn't, he would only be able to get one.
Uh, I, again, and I, we don't need, I don't really know the specifics. It was a phone message and then I did a follow-up text with him. Uh, so that, that's why I was hoping you could chime in to, to, tonight and lay it out for us, uh, and, and for Director Hill. But I'll, I'll leave it up to Matt's, uh, purview to, uh, to attempt to calm the waters here. So I think that's fine. We can move on.
Okay, um, we have a motion for, and I have a second, am I correct? We've been discussing, is there any further discussion? I will call the floor. Counselor Martell?
No.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle is absent. Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan is absent. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is four to one, and the motion passes. Twenty-one dash two-seven-four dash zero-one, resolved to instruct city staff to continue work on drafting proposed ordinance changes pertaining to the retail sale of marijuana as outlined. And I'm going to ask Steve to present, um, a summary this evening, and then I will ask the zoning subcommittee to weigh in. And then the court will have, um, a motion, or actually, in this case, I think I'm gonna wait for the motion till we, we can have a motion to discuss at that. And then we'll see what we need to do. So Steve, the floor is yours. They're muted.
All right. Uh, following summary is the summary of the zoning subcommittee's work over the past number of months, working on the issue of, um, working with staff and industry representatives on licenses for marijuana operators in Sanford on amendments to, uh, not less than four chapters of our city code. Uh, if the city is to vote to allow retail sales of adult-use marijuana defined as retail marijuana stores within Sanford. The following summary, pursuant to state law, local authorization of marijuana establishments within municipalities, the city would need to amend its chapter one sixty-one marijuana to allow retail sales of adult-use marijuana. Currently, all retail sales of marijuana is prohibited in Sanford, as the city has not so authorized per state law. Also, by state law, the request for local authorization to operate marijuana establishments in a municipality prohibited unless authorized by municipal ordinance of said warrant, person seeking that license must first get approval from the municipality, who must have put an ordinance in place to allow for the retail sales. So as the, as the zoning subcommittee has worked with the industry, uh, representatives, they have basically come down to two different options. The first option is favored by the committee and the second option, well, is not favored by. Option one is for the allowance of marijuana stores. I say that specifically because it's defined in state law. Allow, uh, allowance of marijuana stores for the sale of adult-use marijuana, marijuana pursuant to the state law as referenced here. Uh, that would allow for a, a, uh, marijuana store to, uh, you, uh, sell adult-use marijuana, adult-use marijuana products and marijuana paraphernalia. It would be allowed to sell immature marijuana plants and seedlings. It'd also be allowed to sell consumable products not containing marijuana, including but limited to sodas, candies, and baked goods. It would also be allowed any other non-consumable products, including but not limited to apparel and marijuana-related products. Currently, the committee has looked at, there are, uh, currently in our land use, there is, uh, amendment for eight existing marijuana properties. Each of those properties are, are mapped out separately, eight individual lots, lots of land. They are the current allowable marijuana properties for which any level of marijuana activity that has been authorized by the city pursuant to ordinance are allowed, and those are described in chapter one sixty-one. Currently, the committee, uh, recommends and recognizes that five of these eight properties are currently zoned for some level of retail sales. And is showing support for, it would be, uh, one of these five, any of these five properties, which would be nine Renaissance Way, it's urban zoned, zoned for retail sales. Twenty-seven Hancock Lane, urban zoned, zoned for retail sales. The Emery Street property, uh, that is the Eric Stone Mill, it is zoned for retail sales by contract zone. Twenty-two Smatter Drive is in the, uh, industrial business zone. It has a conditional use that allows for retail sales. And twelve Smatter Drive in the industrial business zone also has a conditional use for retail sales. So the committee currently favors, uh, if there is going to be marijuana retail stores, any of these five could apply for one license per property, uh, to have retail sales as laid out. Three of the eight properties are not zoned for retail sales and would not be included in the allowable use for retail sales. That is eighty-one Industrial Avenue, it's an industrial business zone, but it does not have conditional use for retail currently. One sixty-eight Country Club is an industrial business zone, also does not have conditional use for retail currently. And sixteen oh-three Main Street is in the industrial business zone, and is also does not have conditional use for retail currently. Limitation on the properties in the sections set forth above would be one store per property, subject to site permitting for retail activity for current regulation, once an allowable use. Second option that I won't get into extensively tonight, which was not favored by the committee, would allow, would develop new zones whereby retail marijuana stores could be established, anywhere that there is currently a retail designation as would be allowed. Uh, but then you would have to set forward with, uh, uh, the setbacks as currently are within Sanford, of not less than five hundred feet from property line, uh, for any C, CBD tobacco or medical marijuana facilities. Uh, and those would include schools, private schools, public schools, pre-schools, uh, as well as edu-, uh, any other educational facilities for children, pre-kindergarten through grade twelve, to include our parks facility. Committee did not favor that. They're favoring the proposal of, of if amendments are to be made, it's gonna account for the eight properties currently designated as marijuana properties, five of which currently allow retail sales. So looking at if the council votes by resolution tonight to support this direction, then the, the staff will be directed to make amendments in the following areas. You'd make an amendment to chapter one sixty-one to allow retail sales for adult-use marijuana, thereby removing the current prohibition for retail sales of marijuana, of adult-use marijuana, and make that an allowable use. You would then in chapter one twenty, would establish a fee for each of the, uh, five retail marijuana store licenses that, that could be issued to any of those five properties as listed in previous documentation. You would provide in chapter one forty-nine licenses to establish a license category for retail marijuana stores and, uh, move that forward. And then in chapter two eighty, the zoning ordinance and land use tables, uh, to amend the current eight marijuana properties as set forth in two eighty is allowing retail marijuana stores upon any of the eight marijuana properties that are currently zoned for retail sales, either within the land use table, overlay district, or the contract zone, and to adopt any new standards as may be necessary for the licensed activity of retail marijuana stores. But that's the summary of the committee action, uh, committee's consensus to move forward at this point in time. Uh, if the council votes by resolution to move this forward, it would thereby direct staff to make amendments in the, each of these four chapters. Write that up, bring that back through the zoning subcommittee for refinement and work with the industry. Then bring that forward at a future date when ready for the city council for full consideration. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm gonna ask for a motion to discuss and then I'll let the council weigh in.
Motion to discuss.
Motion by, um, Counselor Hurley and, um, second by Counselor Stackpole. Okay, we have two, a motion on the table, let's discuss. I see Counselor Martell's hand up first. I, before I ask for questions, I'm, I'm gonna ask the zoning subcommittee to just weigh in on that presentation, if that pretty much is the flavor of where they all think that they're in agreement with what, um, the city manager presented.
Uh, yes.
I, I think it's, it's a, I think, I think it's a good recap of the, of the, of the work we've done. Um, and, and, uh, well, I'll just leave it at that. Yes, it's a fair representation. I'm sorry I interrupted you, Maura. Go ahead.
No, no, that's fine. I was, I was essentially saying the same thing. It's, I think it's a fair recap, and we discussed a bunch of alternatives and, um, you know, we put so much thought into the eight property philosophy, I guess, that it, it seemed wise to just open up on those properties, the, the final, um, allowable marijuana category.
Okay, and can I just also say that the reason that I actually requested that this be here for the rest of the council to weigh in is that the last subcommittee meeting, there were four councils. I was actually, um, subbing for Counselor Hanselman and Counselor Lanigan showed up. And at that point, I really feel like, um, when four counselors are there, it's more like a regular meeting, which those subcommittee meetings are not. So rather than have four counselors weighing into something, I thought it was only fair that it come back to the council for a full discussion about, um, whether we're gonna send this on, since there were already four. So normally, I just wanna be clear, I would not probably ask to have this, um, come to, to this point. It was just that I felt really uncomfortable with a subcommittee work session that was an advisory, having a majority of counselors there. So, and sometimes that's gonna happen, but in my mind, that's what was happening. So, um, Counselor Martell, you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I, I just had a comment, so, uh, or a question, I guess. Um, so I wasn't too heavily involved when, um, this, the whole marijuana row operations was approved. Uh, but I seem to recall that there was discussion around retail or not retail and, and, um, having not, no retail sales, um, in, in the city was kind of part of that, um, discussion. And so how did, can you, can you maybe talk a little bit about that and, uh, maybe why that, that has changed? Or whether, whether you feel that that's got more support now than it, it may have when that first came out?
I think I give my opinion.
Can I just ask a quick question, though? Can I just follow up on his question? So you're asking for clarification about, was there ever actually, um, consensus along the council to actually continue on the path of repealing the prohibition that currently exists on the retail sale of marijuana in Sanford? That led us to this point?
I, I think it was really, I, I think I led it in January when I said, you know, we really should start working on some sort of an ordinance so we know where we would go if we went for retail. But I don't think there's ever been a true polling of city councilors that say, do we approve or not approve of retail in our community? To be honest with you, Jonathan.
My, my, my re- my remembrance of this is the state law changed. And based on the state law changed, then there was a discussion. And again, it may have been, I, I don't remember who initiated it, quite likely was Maura. Uh, we discussed bringing it back to zoning and this had to. We discussed bringing it back to zoning and this had to have been, geez, I, I want to say we were meeting face to face when this was brought out under items for the agenda or something like that. But I know I was left in the position where I'm going to inform the mayor that we're going to start taking this up under zoning because it is quite a controversial issue. And then we started, we got the okay to do the discussion. But no, we have never taken a affirmative up or down vote on lifting the prohibition. It was my understanding that we would be essentially lifting the prohibition by working through the new ordinances. It would be part of that, part of that process. Not explicit, it wouldn't be an on off switch, but the multiple things we needed to do, one of those would be essentially lifting the prohibition to allow for retail use. So this really isn't about the prohibition per se. But then again, it is about the prohibition per se. It's about a discussion around, do we want to have retail in our community and where do we want that located? It's, it's both of those things, Jonathan. So I, I think if I'm following the mayor's point, we can have an ordinance and not lift the prohibition. You see what I'm saying? We can do the ordinance change, we can do nothing. Or we can do both. So that, that's kind of where we're at. But I, I really feel it helped me out with this. And Marie, what you're looking for is some kind of general consensus in moving the ordinance ahead because there is considerable amount of work on behalf of planning department and city manager and things like that to get that in place. We don't want to get that in place, spend all that time on it and then necessarily have it shut down completely by a board that's not going to support retail sales. Is that again, fair?
Correct. Councilor Hanselman, you have your hand up.
Well, just thank you. Just to add to, to the answer that Councilor Martell is hearing, we actually did vote as a council and I apologize because I don't have these notes in front of me, but I think it was in January twenty twenty. Exactly this very similar discussion, except not as specific to the zones we were looking at. But there was just a vote specifically on whether or not we would dedicate staff time to the, uh, working on the amendments to the ordinances to include, you know, adult use, not non-medical use of marijuana in Sanford. So at any rate, that was a five to two vote with two dissenting, including myself, and that's why I remember it. So the conversations have, have started some time ago, frankly. I think the difference now, which I appreciate, is that Deputy Mayor Hurley, he had us talking about at the subcommittee level specifically, do we want to bring forward a proposal to keep, if we're talking about retail at all, does it, you know, are we going citywide like option two as City Manager Buck laid out or just at the current facility? So I, so kind of hammer down this more specific direction for staff. So again, if they don't burn up time, I think, and then bring something forward that everybody's like, no, that's, that's not what we're looking for. But so I guess in answer, Councilor Martell, this has been brought up before. The majority of the council did support staff time being allocated to updating ordinances already. It, it hadn't been done at this point. So I think we're, at this point to me, we're reaffirming or discussing whether or not this current council wants to move in that direction, but with a little bit more specificity, if that makes sense.
And can I just say, Asti, did that pretty much fit with that whole explanation, what your understanding is of where we, where we are? How we got where we are right now?
Right, it was, uh, so I've been looking for the minutes, I haven't found them yet, but I believe it was December of, December of twenty nineteen.
It was nineteen before COVID.
Yeah, yeah, just before COVID hit. That the city council did vote by resolution to direct staff to go forward. Mayor Cody at the time was not feeling that was a high priority, but nonetheless, the directive was there. And we simply asked for a resolution as to what that would look like before an inordinate amount of staff time was dedicated to that. So, uh, back to your question, Councilor Martell, yes, the council did previously give a directive out there. Uh, that work has been ongoing with the zoning subcommittee. In the summary that I presented to you, it's taken quite a bit of effort to get to that point in order to, we, we now know that if, if you were to vote that forward tonight, I know as, as your manager and the planning director knows and Code knows, where we would write those amendments to facilitate that direction. If it's something different than that, so voted tonight, we'll, we'll move in that different direction. Or if it's not supported by the council tonight, we, we pause at this point in time and don't continue to work on those amendments.
Is there a place, Steve, for continuing to work on the ordinance? I'm going to use option one piece that separates the, um, the removal of the prohibition of retail sales and holds the other in abeyance until a point at which, so that you work on the ordinance, so that at least you know what it's going to look like and, and decide that that's what it is. But, and, and have that work done, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the retail sale prohibition will be lifted immediately. Is there a place for that or is that just not worth doing? And I'm, I'm asking because my objections have always been, granted, I've only been the mayor since January, but I was involved with all of this work. And for me, it was about why, what was the incentive? We received nothing in the sale, in the percentage of sale. We don't give sales tax, tax, nothing. It's like we're going to sell something unlike everything else that we sell and we're not going to get any of it back. And we do that with municipal revenue sharing. So for me, I just don't see what the incentive is. And I'm not, so I'm, I'll be honest, I want to have an ordinance ready to go should the time come when the state decides that they're going to say, yeah, you can keep five percent of your sales. I always felt that that was important, that you didn't have to then start your work, that you could then implement really quickly. I don't think that's going to happen this year, might happen next year in the short session. But so that's where my hesitation is. So, and I don't know if everybody, and I really, being a new counselor and a, and a new mayor, don't, I know that there are, there are five people on this council right now who voted to, to go forward with that. Well, four anyway. So that's, that was, that's where my hesitation is. And, and I guess I just need to hear from the rest of the council that they're willing to go forward and have that discussion. And, and if staff time is available and if it's not impeding all the other things that we're doing. Because that, that's my other question. And Councilor Martell, is your hand up again or is it left?
Uh, it's up again.
Okay, go ahead.
Whenever you get done. Thank you. So, um, just, just to address some of the, um, sort of fees, there, I think I did see something about licensing fees and that kind of thing. So, um, we will be getting some, some benefit for having these shops here. Not to mention, um, you know, the tax, the normal tax revenue for having an additional location. Personally, I don't, I'm not really for marijuana use, but I know it does help some people with some conditions. And, um, the libertarian side of me says to let people do what they want. So I'm okay with, you know, at least having some thoughtful discussions and putting some time into seeing what, what this would look like for ordinances and things. So that it's not something that, you know, we, suddenly there's, you know, a state law change and, and there's a huge push to try to shove something through. So I think it's worth at least looking at. Uh, we don't have to necessarily repeal the, the ban. But at least maybe a little more work might make sense. So we have an idea of what that might look like.
Thank you, Councilor Martell. Deputy Mayor Hurley, was your hand up or down?
Yeah, yeah, up. Um, I just wanted to comment because I think one of the few people I've heard from about their opinions is Jonathan, actually. Because you've been at some of the meetings and myself, Bob and Luke. And I think, um, I, I probably John Martell, I mean, John Tuttle as well. So John, um, the work we've done where we talk about the eight properties and, you know, just basically adding retail to the options available on those eight properties that they can put a retail store there. Is that something that, is that a direction that you're comfortable with? Or did you want a broader opening of retail in the community? Is there, you know, because when I first started the conversation, when we started discussing this in January, I was thinking one or two pot shops or one or two shops in town cap it. With Steve, with Mr. Buck talking and he said, you know, if we keep to the eight properties, it's a lot easier. We, you know, we have the overlay done and that opened up the option of more shops. Um, how do you feel about the discussions we've had?
So I, I think, yeah, eight seems like plenty. I drive it, I drive through Lebanon and there's, it's a boatload of them down there. So, you know, I don't think we'd need twenty shops in town. I would consider it might make sense to allow the places that are currently growing it to able to have a retail spot there, at least as a start, and then see what that looks like from there.
So the idea of the eight properties is, is comfortable to you?
Yeah, I think that that makes a good sense as a starting point. Um, I don't think we need fifty of them. Is there, is there sort of any feedback from people that are trying to open a whole bunch of shops or?
Well, the common feedback from the growers has been, so there are probably thirty or so growers in town. They want, they want to be able to grow, produce, sell all in a ladder so that every pro, every level has its profit stream. And so they can, they can be part of every single level. So if they, if they could, they'd want to each have it. If they grow here, they'd want to be able to have a shop here. And obviously, I mean, I, the way I see the marijuana industry going nationwide in, in the community, the places that have legalized it, you have a spike, a drop and a leveling. So, um, you know, the, the, the idea of keeping to the eight properties has, has grown on me and kept, and I feel comfortable where it, it, you know, each, each property that has growers on it, some of them have one grower, some of them have multiple growers, that location can have a retail shop that, on that property. That's, that's why I've gotten comfortable with it.
So would that, we have, you said we had like thirty growers. Is that, so are you saying that we would have more than the eight?
No, we've, we've talked about limiting it so that each location, you know, Emery Street, the ones on Smarter Drive, all those eight locations would have the ability to have one retail shop.
Okay, what, what about the other growers? Are they're more spread out, right?
No, they're, well, those are in-home growers, they're not, they, they're they're in-home growers, which we, we couldn't restrict, we can't restrict medical in-home growing for a certain number of patients. So those growers offsite, yeah.
That makes sense.
They're just medical, right?
To be clear, we're talking about five locations that are actually zoned for retail.
Yes, we are. There are eight sites allowing for all the other stuff and they would be allowed retail if retail ever became an option in our zoning ordinance.
So let's just, let's just round this up because I guess I'm, I'm not hearing from really anyone that they don't, doesn't sound like there's anyone who doesn't want the planning department to start to continue this work. Would that be safe to say?
Yeah, I mean, I think it, I think it makes perfect sense because we're, we're, we're still even here this evening. And there's been a, a good presentation here and everything, but it lacks the specifics. And I think, uh, the council needs a real black and white document that that they can, you know, truly dig into and, and understand. And, uh, you know, the horizon continues to change in the marijuana field. I, I would say we're probably looking at least a year out, probably, even if everything went smoothly and everybody was in favor of it and there was no discussion. Before we could get all these rules and regulations in place, we're probably looking at next summer before do retail here locally. So there's, there's still a lot of, um, water over the dam that needs to transpire. You know, I, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'll wear my politics on my sleeve here. I've, I've, uh, supported medical marijuana, although that was pretty much replaced by the time I joined the council and I support, uh, medical, uh, excuse me, retail adult sales in the community. I don't see any reason why, um, we shouldn't move ahead with this. I don't know what it's going to look like. I don't know whether it'd be one store or five stores or whatever, but I don't see a reason why we shouldn't do the process. Uh, and I just, you know, while I could be friends to you, Mary, but I'll make the statement of if a new ice cream place was going to move into town, again, we treat marijuana business as a business like every other business, which has been our mantra. New ice cream place moves into town, we don't ask ourselves, what are we going to get for that? It's like, oh, somebody wants to open a, an ice cream store, you know, they open an ice cream store.
Do you use liquor, do you use liquor and tobacco as your comparisons? Liquor and tobacco are better?
No, no, I'm not going to because marijuana is a business like every other business. So.
Liquor and tobacco are restricted. Liquor and tobacco are restricted in retail.
Plus, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve. In the, I'm sorry to put you on the spot with this, but it's a fundamental question. In our municipal revenue sharing, hasn't some of the marijuana revenue been rolled into municipal revenue sharing so that it comes back to the community? Percentage of it anyways comes back to municipal revenue sharing. That was, that was part of my understanding I heard, so.
In, in theory, excuse me, um, in theory, is it what? Sales tax? Well, no, no.
No, it does not.
No, it's specifically segregated out. It doesn't go into that municipal revenue sharing pool.
We get none of it, none of it.
I had to think about that for a second.
You know, I, I just think, you know, the, the time has come. I mean, you talk about law enforcement, law enforcement's already enforcing the law. Recreational marijuana is still on the books. There's probably people driving around stoned. Law enforcement already has to deal with that. Having a retail store in Sanford is not going to make a huge impact on that kind of stuff. Uh, I was in a meeting with the, with the chief where he said, quite frankly, if he had to confront somebody, he would much rather confront somebody who was high on marijuana than somebody who was intoxicated on alcohol. So, you know, I, I just think it's time to take a, you know, a good, hard look at this. If, if I could vote for this today, I would vote for it today. But if it never happens, you know, it never, it never happens. I mean, as I said before, I think in the zoning committee, this is not my hill to die on. But, uh, you know, anyways, it's jobs, it's income, it's all, all those kinds of things, it's economic development. And we've thumbed our nose that, that as a council, right from the beginning.
I think you're, I think you're going a little too far, Mr. Stackwell.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
I think you are.
I don't think so because of the prohibition, because of the prohibition that was put into place.
Please, I know it's difficult for me to do this and I don't want, I do have a gavel that I really don't want to use, but I have counselors with their hands up and a member of the public. So I'd like to go to, let the council finish the discussion and then see if there's anybody that, let's just not get to back and forth. It's too difficult.
That's fine. I thought, I thought I had the floor, Madam Mayor, but that's okay.
Not saying that you didn't, but I have counselors with their hands up and I just don't want to get into a back and forth about what we did do, what we didn't do. Let's just, um, this is not the night that we're going to just, this is, this is the discussion I want to have.
I think I said at the time that we voted on the prohibition, we would never lift it. And here we are, a number of years later, prohibition's stolen away. And we have, uh, already have conversations about it's never going to be lifted, so.
We don't have a prohibition.
All right, please, Counselor, Deputy Mayor Hurley and Counselor Stackwell, I'm going to go to Councilor Hanselman. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. And I won't be long. Um, I, I'm more from the, uh, so, you know, I, I did, as I mentioned earlier, a vote no along with Mayor Cody to, uh, put staff time towards this effort quite some time ago. Since that time, you know, what, what I will say is that the state has made some progress. So at that point in time, part of that argument from my perspective was the lack of clear guidance from the state. You know, their, their department of, um, is it OPM, I think at the time, you know, everything was very new. So, you know, the state has made some progress. There is a little bit more guidance. There's still a lot of guidance that's missing, that's under development, that's likely going to change, especially with the medical side of things. So, you know, I, I, at that time, I, I said, I don't think Sanford needs to be at the forefront of, um, setting up ordinances for retail use. I, I still am not sure that that's the case. And it's more of an issue for me at this point, there, there is a cost and, and we can argue obesity. Counselor Stackwell with ice cream, but you know, we, we have seen in Um, Counselor Stackpole with ice cream, but you know, we we have seen in multitude of studies across the nation about the cost of um what has happened along with marijuana legalization, especially with our youth. And I I, as many of you know, I'm very passionate about our youth and the impact, uh, which we've already felt here in Stanford over the last couple of years, um, is is significant, and there is a cost associated with it. And you know, when I if if there was a local option sales tax, I would be all over this um to help offset that cost um and allow us to have additional staffing in our schools to address marijuana use and have plans in place and so on. But at any rate, um I I don't object to moving forward with staff time here, but I the question I have is really about at this point, when we look at our planning department and and our staff and what they have on their plates with a comprehensive plan that seems to be you know, continually um of of conversation and and our progress on that comprehensive plan. We have a lot of other directives and requests to them. Is it realistic or do we need to? Like, we're on the priority list, I guess, or maybe um we just lay it to them and and give them a timeframe and say, hey, we expect something back in a year. You know, so I guess I'm more the question of, again, um, from a staff resource standpoint and other priorities we have, is it realistic that they can get to this? And I don't know if Steve, um, you know, if you feel like you have a good sense of that already.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so as far as the planning department is concerned, they're still processing a record number of new applications. As far as the land is concerned, as far as subdivisions are concerned, as far as new housing is concerned, um, codes the same as far as the smaller applications as well. Uh, they are still trying to work through the comprehensive plan to get that ready to present uh later this fall. Uh, so they have an extreme amount of work on their table. So I I I too would question, is this the highest priority to be assigning their time right now? Or should we we allow to continue to work through this process? It's voted to move forward on this tonight. We will work on the 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 start of the amendments and get those outlined and get those proposals moved forward. Uh, because I I view at that point in time, there will be a tremendous amount of conversation as we've had in the last couple of zoning meetings, probably the last one, the the most, the highest number of comments really started to get down into the weeds um of the details, you know, the nitty gritty of if you do this, then it's that, and the and the small changes in definitions and and trying to then blend dispensaries with retail and such under that. So uh, just be be clear, currently, we're talking about retail marijuana stores. That's adult-use products only. Does not include medical marijuana, adult use only. So currently, there's no allowance of any retail sales of marijuana. Adult uh medical marijuana is accomplished by the patient-to uh grower uh transaction. They're allowed to have offices in those zones that are currently allowed to have offices. City spent a tremendous amount of time getting the allowance for those offices to have those hard-built facilities for where they were zoned and allowed. This would be no different with the retail sales, but where there was zoned and allowed. But specifically made sure that it did not fall into the definition of retail sales. When you lift the retail sale aspect as currently being discussed, it would only be lifting the moratorium on retail sales of adult use, not medical. I just wanted to make that clarification.
And every I just wanna make sure there was nobody on the council that misunderstood that, correct? Counselor Hanselman, did you have your hand up again?
Well, and and just to follow up that uh with that, I think, because I do I do understand that piece, but I I will share that, you know, if you're out and about, um we have medical dispensaries that are operating much like retail location and and whether we however we wanna say it, you know, um the the bottom line is they act much like a retail location already. So if you are in wherever, Portland, Bitterford, and I've been at um MMA meetings where people said to me, oh, yeah, Sanford allows uh adult-use retail. And I said, no, we don't actually. Those are medical dispensaries. So there is already the perception um that we allow and have, in fact, multiple uh retail locations in Sanford, but thank you, I I do understand the difference to that.
Um, are there any other counselors who have comments?
I just ask, I mean, if um are we talked, are we gonna have a like a kind of a thumbs up or down on continuing at all, continuing with option one, you know, or didn't we totally miss the mark on option one? That's that's kind of what I was, you know, hoping out of this.
So, I mean, I I'm I'm not sure. I I was just thinking that the resolve was to allow the work to continue. And and the zoning subcommittee had decided, I thought, to send this on to um the plant, the depart- the planning department to work on it. Was that not?
But are we off are we off base with option one, Madam Mayor, or is option one?
I don't think you are. I mean, based on the discussion that I heard, that I didn't hear much for option two. I heard more for the limiting of the um of the limiting of the sale of adult-use marijuana. And at the and I I heard more support not for for and for limiting it to areas that already allow retail sales. Not necessarily making it fit the growers that are there. So that's what I got out of that. You know, am I incorrect? I don't hear from anybody.
Well, it's it's disappointing not to have Luke and Counselor Tuttle here. I know John Jonathan's been able to get up to speed on this particular issue, which is great. But it is disappointing not to have the other two.
Well, Counselor Lanigan was actually at that subcommittee.
Right, so we know what he
And I knew he wanted to send it forward. So all I need is as a majority of counselors sitting here in front of the public, you know, to say that, and then we'll send it on forward. Um, are there any other counselors who want to talk? Because Diane Conley has had her hand up and been very patient as a member of the public. So Diane, would you like to to ask a question or make a comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. Um, first of all, I want to put a disclaimer out there. This these comments have nothing to do with the planning board or any other planning um board member. Um, these are my personal opinions as a resident. Um, I would like to ask you a question, Madam Mayor. Has anyone done any homework in regards to calling other town managers, uh, any mayors in regards to what they why they decided not to, like Wells? Or why they decided to go for it? And what are what are they dealing with now? Um, I I I think this is, you know, we're working on an image problem as well here in town. We're trying to do the the PPI with the downtown. Um, and then we have the mill buildings um and trying to spruce all those places up and going through brownfields, and then we're gonna allow this. Um, I I'd like maybe some phone calls to be made, uh, perhaps to find out what other town mayors or managers are dealing with that did or did not allow retail marijuana. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, um I think I'm gonna be honest, I think it would be sufficient to have a motion to continue if if you if if someone is so inclined to make that motion as it was stated here to continue work on the on drafting the proposed ordinance, changes pertaining to the retail sale. And if you wanna keep in there an option or not, that's up to you too. I see somebody else with their um hand up. I really, um, I think it's, um, okay, Jason Trobridge, go ahead before I ask for another motion.
I just, you guys can hear me?
I can hear you, but I can't see you.
Um, I just wanted to clarify about if more work's going to be done, because I heard a couple of counselors tonight mention that they would be in favor of continuing the draft ordinance, um, just to have something ready and allowing one retail store on each of the eight properties. I just wanna make sure that I was hearing that correct. That was kind of different from what we had spoken about in the subcommittee meeting. So that's what I heard tonight was that counselors would be in favor of having one retail on each of the eight properties, trying to keep it condensed to those um and continue to work on a draft ordinance, at least have it ready and prepared if po- if possibly something came down from the state and you guys wouldn't be um trying to do something last minute. So is that, did I hear that correctly?
No, Ms. Trobridge, you you there would have to be retail allowed on those eight. So if you're on a site that doesn't allow retail, it's a combination. It has to be, it has to allow retail. Uh, it has to allow retail and it has to allow pot. So if you don't have the retail option, you wouldn't it it even though it would be open to it unless retail is approved at that location, you wouldn't be able to do a shop.
Okay, just clarify on that. I thought I thought tonight there was more support. I actually I'm just copying it out of five properties to allow it on the eight properties. That's what I kind of got from.
That's a totally different ordinance change, because if retail isn't allowed on the site, it's we can't just make it about marijuana retail. It has to retail has to be allowable on that site. It's not just about the one product.
Yeah, and I guess I'm just confused because we keep calling it eight properties, a sub-zone or an overlay zone that are included together. So when amendments have to be made, I'm assuming that you guys can amend it under it being the overlay zone that included all eight properties. That's that's just how I view it, but um if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. Um, but I just tonight I thought some of the counselors mentioned that they wanted would be allow it on the eight properties that previously.
It might have sounded like that, but I'm not so sure. I mean, I wouldn't say that there was that was a majority opinion that I heard. What I heard was more general discussion.
And I guess the other thing is, um, you gotta start thinking about like real impact fees and real licensing fees, because I do know there is no up to sales tax that's coming out of the community. But I I'm assuming that some revenue could be made up on impact fees from these establishments having retail. Um, increase licensing fees to have adult-use retail as well could be something you guys could look down the path and maybe see a respectable amount of number that would make it worthwhile for the city to have this so that all this time and effort doesn't go in and into it, and the city doesn't get anything out of it. I totally understand where the city's coming from in that aspect.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
So you want to make a motion?
Well, just one second. Diane, did you still have your hand up?
Negative.
Okay, still up. Alrighty, so I guess.
Before I make a motion, does Steve have any, he's at one point, he kind of put his hand up a little bit. Does he have any comments based on what he's heard from discussion before we make a motion?
No, uh, so I continue to from a a perspective of equity. So I I applaud the state when they made a major change that at one point in time, um you say this correctly, at one point in time, you had to vote to disallow various types of marijuana operations. Then the state went and changed the law. So everybody was dry, no different than alcohol a- after prohibition. Everybody was dry until such time as you specifically put forward an ordinance to lift the restriction of being dry and allow the various categories of utilization as defined by the state. I applaud the state on that. When I continue to draw that parallel, I grew up in a small town that was dry when I was a kid. I had many friends and relatives who were alcoholics. It didn't prevent them from getting alcohol. They drove uh five hundred feet across that town line to a little store that located on the edge of town specifically to serve the people in there. But over the many decades that that small town lifted this prohibition on the sale of alcohol, a small amount at a time, and worked their way through that. It started with uh a certain number of of um days a week and a certain number of hours, and then it went to um six days a week and expanded hours, and it went to seven days, but you had to screen and all. All of those derivations, I see that the marijuana industry is not different than the alcohol industry when it came back on board. Many communities, politically or from a business perspective, need to come to grips with what this is to have retail sales. So it's likely not the store itself that's the large impact. It's the person that chooses to use a product inappropriately. That's the impact, right? No different than alcohol or a firearm or anything else. It's the person that chooses to use it inappropriately. If you have a store or you don't have a store, it's still allowable for a person to possess and utilize both medical and adult-use marijuana in this town, whether you have a store or not. So it's coming to grips with if you are going to allow retail sales of adult use, where should where should they be, what your limiting factors on those, if you don't want to be overrun. And I put emphasis on council's past work to prevent the quote industry from overrunning uh properties on a speculative basis buying up industrial space that could be utilized otherwise and not being overrun and becoming a single industry community. They put limitations by the eight properties. So for any level of licensed activity or any anybody that had even applied via licensed activity for marijuana utilization was swept into those eight properties. And over that period of time, the council has said back then and continues to hold on to that that those eight properties are enough in a community. And all those eight properties, there are five that allow for retail sales. So if you're going to allow your retail sales, that's why the logical thing was, we have eight properties currently, five allow retail sales, one licensed per, that seems more than reasonable to have fi- up to five retail operations licensed in the community. But is there the need for twenty? No, the answer is no. That's been the consensus moving forward. So that's what the logic that's gotten you from from there to here is following the same progression as alcohol when it came out of prohibition from there to here. Thank you.
Okay, so based on what Steve has said, I'm in favor of four with that. So and that would be the motion would be resolved to instruct city staff to continue work on drafting proposed ordinance changes pertaining to the retail sale marijuana as outline. And if you wanna say it's outlined in option A, then that's fine.
Um, I'll make that motion with as outlined in option one. I think it's how it was labeled in the presentation.
Okay, so that was a motion by Counselor Hurley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stackpole. Knew there would be a second. Okay, any other discussion or can we proceed to vote? Danny hands up. Okay, I will call the roll. Counselor Martell.
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman.
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle is absent. Counselor Stackpole.
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan is absent. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
And I am also, yeah, so that is a five, zero with two absent. So I think you've got your direction, Steve. I'm gonna just say upfront, though, as as I think it's important, but I think that right now we're in the building season, so um, I I am concerned, as Counselor Hanselman said, about staff time. So I'm not asking to see it in, you know, two weeks or four weeks, or, you know, let's let's do it and let's not wait. I mean, I I honestly think if COVID hadn't happened, you would have had this completed last year. Sounds like there was a delay that was related to that.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, okay, so I think we are now, knew we wouldn't get out of here.
This isn't bad.
Counselor member comments. Counselor Martell.
Uh, I don't have anything specific. Um, just thank you for a good discussion tonight and um I'm glad we can have have some tough conversations and keep everything moving on. So, thank you.
Hey, Counselor Hanselman.
Thank you. I just want to share, um, and you know, full disclosure, I do have a senior at the high school this year, but I had an opportunity to attend the Sanford Regional Technical Center Awards of Recognition Night and was just so impressed with the caliber of uh programs that we have at that technical center here in our community and some of the skills that our youth are coming out of where they're receiving certifications um to be mechanics, welders, um, electricians. I mean, it's just really impressive and and I honestly hadn't realized it until I attended that awards event. So shout out to all of our students from surrounding communities as well as Stanford and 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 thanks to the folks that make SRTC possible. And then, um, of course, a shout out to our graduating class of twenty twenty-one. I am a class of ninety-three Sanford graduate, so I watch graduation almost every year. I cry almost every year, but I think this year will be particularly tough with my son graduating, but it's uh next Wednesday, the ninth, uh, and it is broadcast by WSSR TV. So uh it's a great event to watch um for folks. And then my last plug is uh on June eighth, of course, next Tuesday is the official um vote for the city, uh, excuse me, the school department um budget referendum. You can vote in advance of that, of course, but uh next Tuesday, the eighth, is your last day to get that one vote.
Thank you, Counselor Hanselman. And congratulations on your son's and his award. Counselor Stackpole.
Uh, just a real quick, uh, there's a uh, I think, a new app for iPhones and probably Android devices as well called.
for iPhones and, uh, probably Android devices out called FoodTrux, F-O-O-D-T-R-U-X. Uh, and, uh, it's free. Uh, you download it, you set up your profile by your zip code or whatever it might be, and it will show you the food trucks, um, that are, that are in the area, you choose a state of Maine or southern Maine or whatever, it shows you the food trucks going down into New Hampshire and things like that. So I mentioned this for, for two reasons, number one, uh, we do allow food trucks now uh, in the city of Sanford and, uh, so it's worth taking a look to see what's there. I do see the, uh, Gotta Be Frank, uh, truck, which I believe is Sanford-based, but they spend a lot of time here in Sanford. Uh, we, uh, uh, this leads me into my second comment, which of course is about COVID shots. Uh, this weekend, we looked up, uh, the Bite Into Maine truck, which actually was located at Allagash Brewing and we all went in and got these big giant lobster rolls from them, uh, and we, this is relatively outside, if you've never been there, uh, it's an outside area at Allagash Brewing. Got a couple of beers and, uh, big giant lobster rolls without any masks on. So, uh, get your shot, so you can do things like that. Uh, but, uh, I, I say it for two reasons, number one, look up your food trucks, if you want to use them, find out what's in the Sanford community. Also, if you're a food truck owner, uh, this is an app you ought to know about and get your information there. Literally go in, tap on it, the menu pops up, the location, all kinds of fun stuff about it. And, uh, you can participate in the, uh, food truck hysteria that we have here, uh, around, uh, the state, so that's my comment.
Okay.
Good comment. My parents like a food truck in Kennebunk and so they, you know, I'll just let them know there are others that they should go around and try, you know, keep them busy this summer. So, um, I'm just going to mention again, Sanford Mayors are starting on, uh, Friday night, opening night. Uh, we have two games this weekend, Friday at 6:30 and Sunday at 4:30. Uh, and just so people know, we do have Gotta Be Frank coming for two of the games. I think the, um, uh, Booster Truck has decided they're going to come back for a few games. It was an odd, like, all of a sudden message today, so I sent them the, the schedule and told them to fill in their dates. Um, and then of course we have the concession stand, so we're looking forward to a really good season, I think it's going to be, um, fun. We're, we're excited that we can be 100%, uh, the crowd can be 100%. We're excited that we didn't have to tape off certain areas. Um, it's all outside, I think, um, I don't think we're going to have to make any mandatory masks. You know, you can go to the bathroom maybe because it's such a great event outside, so. Looking forward to it, even though my life has basically changed for two months, so, yay. I'll see you about the, uh, the slushy machine, Ann, soon.
Okay, thank you. Well, um, future, I don't have anything for comments this evening, future agenda items? We'll just go through the list quickly, Counselor Martell.
Um, no, I don't have anything right now, thank you.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes, thank you, I was hoping that it might be possible to request, uh, really, and I know we're busy, so it may be down the road at some point later this summer, but to request to hear from our rec department advisory board. I think they've been together for about a year, if my memory is correct, maybe less. Um, but I'd love to hear how that's going, because they were a newly formed advisory board and they're also without, of course, um, Alan Greedy, we have some other, you know, obviously great staff, but we'd just love to hear from those folks and hear how things are going.
Thank you, and I did not even know there was, um, a regular advisory board, so, thank you. Um, uh, Counselor Stackpole, any other agenda items?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, um, Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Uh, yeah, I'm actually going to jump off of what Ann said, I remembered a conversation that I overheard at Lowe's, where a young couple who had just moved to the area were essentially, uh, repeating gossip they had heard that the Sanford water source was near a Superfund site and that they shouldn't be using Sanford water. So I told them, I said, well, that's not true. I said, you should really call the Sanford Water District and get a report on their water quality, I said, they really do a great job. I said, the Sanford water is actually excellent, it's very safe. So maybe Dave Parent should probably also, you know, do a water district report and maybe Andre, since tis the season of emptying the lakes for our sewer, maybe Andre could come and do a report at the same time or similar time.
Yes, not, not in June, maybe in July.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, just, I'm just.
It's perfect though, as soon as we, as soon as the Malsum, as soon as the Malsum Lake starts drying up, everybody's going to wonder why, so. If, if this drought, if the drought continues after this rainstorm.
Well, thank you all for a really great meeting and everybody that stuck around to watch us, um. Get out to vote next Tuesday and graduation on Wednesday. Uh, and you can see, uh, the SRTC award ceremony is still, it's on YouTube, so I think it's, it, it is really, um, impressive to see, but thank you.
Did you cry, Ann? Did you cry?
Oh, I, okay. I'm going to declare us adjourned, okay?
Yes.
Good night, thank you everyone.
Good night, everyone.